Hello and welcome to a conversation on the daily burn. I'm your host Eric Miller. Join today, an awesome candidate from the great state of Wisconsin for Oshkosh City Council. Let's hear it. How you doing, Leteria?
Hi, I'm well. How are you?
Doing well. Thanks for taking some time to chat with me. Did I pronounce your name correctly?
Leteria. Yes, you did. Thank you so much for having me. Not a people, a lot of people get that right. So thank you.
Awesome. Yeah. So yeah, I've, I've, I've had a few candidates on from Wisconsin City Council races. Fond du Lac, I had Michael Beersley is also in your race. And you guys, I think I discovered you through the, our Wisconsin Revolution endorsement, which is congratulations on that.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I was definitely excited to be endorsed by them for sure.
Very cool. So yeah, I want to ask about the race, you know, your platform and so forth. And I'm going to give you an opportunity to brag on Oshkosh. But you know, what, what inspired you to run? Let's go to the beginning. What, you know, well, actually before that, what animated you politically? And then what inspired you to run?
Yeah. So I'm really my inspiration came from being in this community for 29 years. Was not born and raised. I feel as though I was though I have such a deep rooted connection and went to high school here. And so I feel like I have a pretty good pulse on the strengths and opportunities within our community. And so I've worked professionally for about 13 years as a servant leader. And so through that process, you know, I thought, wow, how can I serve on a little bit of a higher level? And then city council came to mind and just being able to serve the community at large. I know there's some concerns out there with being heard and residents not feeling like they're really a part of the decision process. And so, you know, I feel like I'm relatable. I'm a working class person. I'm just like everyone that I'm looking to serve. And so I thought, who better, you know, to give it a shot and put my name in the hat? So that was, that was kind of what spurred it. Also, there's been a couple of big things for me. From the pandemic to all of the social injustice that's been kind of, I would say it's not new. But the presentation of it is new, right? You weren't seeing it so adamantly with social media. And you know, people live streaming and just camera phones and all of these things. And so I thought, you know, how can I be a part of making my community better, right? Like, I know the country needs to be better, but I think it starts locally. It starts at home and each one do their little part, right? And so that was kind of the political aspirations that, that really like, you know, got me inspired to run.
Here, here. That's awesome. So you know, that's not, you know, that's not an experience that I have personally, but I'm certainly empathetic to it. Sure. And you know, you mentioned you're a mom, you know? Just talk about that. Tell me about that experience.
Yeah.
You talk about racial injustice and you know, it's, it's always been there, but like you said, you know, now it's, it's in our faces more, you know? Do you feel that's leading to positive change? Like, what are your thoughts on that?
Absolutely. I feel like, um, you know, Oshkosh is definitely a growing melting pot of people from all types of backgrounds, all types of ethnicities, educational differences. But I went to school here, right? And so from, you know, that time till now, there's been significant changes. Like it is so much better, so much more welcoming and refreshing. But we still have some ways to go. I think that that can never really stop because we are continuing to have people move here that are just different from us, right? Whether it's a disability difference or whatever, LGBTQ. You know, so I want to make sure that all of us, right? Collaboratively or collectively feel like we're welcome, right? And so how do we do that, right? It starts with things like Diversity Affairs Commission, Equity and Inclusion Committees. And we've done a really good job in this community, starting those things. I want to be a part of taking those things to more of an actionable point. Because I feel like you can't spend all of your time strategizing. You gotta take a risk and you gotta, you gotta just get out there, right? Cause if you just stay there, nothing changes. For my children, obviously they're African American boys. And I feel like they've had pretty great experiences in this community, much better than I had, definitely. Just growing up, cause like I said, things have, have changed quite a bit and people are more willing to learn. They, they're willing to educate themselves so that they can understand. And a really big word that I think is important that you used earlier was empathy. You don't have to necessarily experience something to empathize with it, with it. And I think that makes a huge difference. When I was in school, I was one of two African Americans and I was there alone for two years. My last year, there was another minority student or marginalized group, I would say, that joined. It is a lot better now, but how do we ensure that everyone's being educated from an equitable standpoint? Everyone is getting the same opportunities so that we see more diverse people thriving and not just surviving. For lack of a better way to say that, I think also about COVID-19 and how minority groups or marginalized groups were impacted at much larger percentages. And so as I thought about that, I'm like, so you know, why, why is that? Well, when you really look at it, some of those groups didn't have those equitable educational pieces. And what happened is they're essential workers. Well, essential workers need to be at work. And so they're impacted at a little bit of a larger rate. So those are just a few things that I thought about. And want to, you know, really be a part of that growing change.
Yeah. And thank you for stepping up and raising your hand and running, you know, and congratulations on making it through the primary.
Yeah, it was exciting. Yeah. Yeah. Our city council right now, I think, is wonderful, right? And they have been, you know, for years and years. Part of my desire to run as well was just getting some representation on council that reflects our community. Because it's, it's very much the same, whether it's lack of female representation, whether it's lack of a diverse representation. But I think, you know, you need kind of that melting pot of people with different mindsets and diverse thoughts that really help a city grow, whether it's economically or just to create a greater sense of community. So that was another reason that I really felt the desire to run, right? So between that and COVID and wanting to make sure we have a good rebound from that economically. And then last but certainly not least, just increasing our equity and inclusion in our community.
Right on. Yeah. And I want to get into some of that a little bit more, but I, you know, I want to give you an opportunity to, I like to ask people to brag on their district or brag on their city, right?
Yeah.
Oshkosh, Wisconsin. And again, I had Michael on, I guess maybe two or three weeks ago now.
Sure.
So tell us about Oshkosh, brag on it.
Um, just looking at it there, it's just beautiful. It's water everywhere you go, which brings a lot of tourism to our area. We're very well known, actually coined event city. So that's super fun. We, you know, have lots of festivals and concerts and just a lot of things going on, on the water. So we get people from all around the world to our EAA Air Adventure, which is one of the largest air shows in the country. And so it's just a beautiful place, like just scenically, when you, no matter where you come in from, it's gorgeous. I know when I was really young and I first moved here, there was a thought that like, oh my gosh, Wisconsin. You know, it's just going to be cows and, you know, farm life. And you know, we certainly have beautiful things like that as well, but it is, it is simply gorgeous. It's just a beautiful city and the people are definitely wonderful. I think I wouldn't still be here 29 years later because I became an adult and I had choices. And so I chose to get married and, and raise a family here, simply because I think it's a, it's a really wonderful place to live.
Right on. You mentioned tourism and let's tie that back to COVID. I imagine, you know, if tourism is a big part of the economy of, you know, Oshkosh, you know, that had to be hit significantly by COVID. You know, do you have any, any designs on city council of how to like, you mentioned, use the word rebound, right? What are your plans? What are your aspirations to, you know, you hope to do about that?
Yeah. So my thought around that is we have to incentivize people to come, right? So we have to figure out a way to help, right? Whether that's lowering some of our event fees, even if only for a short period of time, the first year, the second year. I think the return on that investment is going to be huge because people will return. And we as a city, we definitely depend on that, that influx of tourism typically from, I would say June until September is really the timeframe where we see a lot of people from even just, you know, 20, 30 miles away to hundreds of miles away. And so I think it's going to be important that we come up with a plan and that when things are brought before us, that we really take a good look at it and seeing how we can make it happen.
Right on. You mentioned that the current city council isn't terrible. I'll phrase it that way.
Yeah.
Is there anything that, you know, that you think they, you know, that you want to get in there and do better? Like, is there, you know, maybe they dropped the ball on something or misunderstood something like what, you know? How would you course correct them? And again, not saying they're terrible, you know, but you know, how would you improve what's there?
I think, um, I don't know if I would use the word improve as much as I would add or increase. I just think a different perspective would be beneficial to both city council and our city at large. One area that I kind of spoke to earlier is that there is definitely a significant amount of residents that don't feel heard. And so my thought and idea is how do we make that more readily available? How do we get to them proactively versus reactively? Cause a lot of times I think they feel like they are speaking to things that they didn't like, or that they didn't want to happen, or they didn't want to see versus being a part of the planning process. And I mean, let's face it, no one person is going to like everything. But sometimes being transparent and open about the reasons why can at least help them accept the answer or the change. And so I feel like just being a lot more transparent with special assessments and those fees and why we thought this was a better way to go or why we chose this. And I've also been kind of throwing around the idea of having something like we're doing right now. And just having like a Zoom that's bimonthly or quarterly where no pressure. We can have an open, transparent, respectful conversation about the city strengths and opportunities. And I'd be able to share that back with my council members, just as a way to be more proactive versus reactive, right? So we, we know what's happening. We know the pulse of the city and that will aid us in making great decisions for the city.
Awesome. Yeah. And based literally on their, their feedback, right? Their wishes, their wants, right? I didn't mention it, but you do not take giant corporate PAC money. You don't get to get, you know, you know, lobbyists aren't, you know, sending you massive checks. You don't get help from pharmaceutical companies or Raytheon or anybody like that. So your grassroots campaign, you know, which I always love. I wouldn't have you on otherwise, right? And you know, that matters because like what you're talking about is being proactive, you know, actually, you know, serving the public. You mentioned you were servant leader like that, you know, what a blessing the people of Oshkosh to have someone like you on their city council, right? You know, wanting to hear more, you know, wanting to, you know, tell me what you need, right? That's, you know, Godspeed. We should have more people like you, you know, in public office. So.
Thank you.
I'm glad that you said that, you know, what's, you know, you mentioned that their voices aren't being heard. What's maybe the most common thing that you're hearing that, that they're frustrated by?
Currently, currently, there's a lot of frustration around the city mask or face covering ordinance. And so there's been a lot to do about that. The other biggest thing is property taxes. How those are, I guess, how they're all put together from a budget standpoint. And the biggest one that I've really heard is about like street repairs and special assessment fees and how those are handled. I agree with the concern of finding a more equitable way of handling those fees. Obviously we want our streets and our sidewalks repaired. We want things to look pleasingly to the eye. But currently there definitely could be some room for taking another look, maybe seeing what other cities have done successfully. And then kind of going back to the drawing table with that.
That's great. Also on your, on your Facebook page, on the banner, you mentioned, I think transparency, equity. Can you talk about the inequities you're referring to and what you would do about it?
Sure. Really that comes from just a welcoming standpoint. Because if people don't feel welcome, they don't get the opportunities that those that feel welcome do, if that makes sense. So from jobs, career opportunities, educational opportunities. I mean, like for instance, we have, I think it's like the third largest public university, University of Oshkosh here. And there is a ton, 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 ton of different types of students there. And what we see is that majority of them get the great education. I mean, it's a wonderful school. They get their degrees and, and they move on. They don't take root in Oshkosh. And so for me, I feel like, wow, those are some great people, smart people, educated people that could start businesses here to help with our development or just, you know, have careers here. But they decide majority to leave. And I think that comes from a sense of not feeling welcome. Now, like I said before, we have had some changes over the last probably two to three years where we do have different community efforts. So we have LGBTQ. And they have a place down at the university where people can come and they can learn and they can be informed. There's a multicultural center. So we have all of these things that we're starting. But we have to make sure that everyone is treated fairly and that they feel welcome. Because once you feel welcome, you'll raise your hand.
Yeah. Boy, that's great. And you, you know, you said about making it actionable before. There's a difference between paying at lip service and actually like, you know, the rubber meeting the road, right? So one of the examples that just is stuck in my craw in the last, in the 2020 presidential cycle, you know, obviously I'm a supporter of Bernie Sanders, right? But on an issue like reparations, he's still with the flock of, you know, oh, we need to do a study. Whereas Mary Ann Williamson was like full throated, it's a debt that's owed boom, right? There's no like parsing words and stuff. So you know, it's time for action, like you said.
Yeah. Yeah. Certainly believe in, in research and making sure you're knowledgeable. But at some point, to your point, yeah, let's, let's get at it. Let's move. And I'm a person that, you know, I'm, I feel like you, there's no reward without risk. And so you gotta just, as long as your intentions are well and you're not intentionally hurting people or even inadvertently hurting people is an issue. But I think you have to just have that courageous conversation and it's not always comfortable. But if you know what's needed, you know, you gotta do it. And that's just kind of who I am.
Yep. Maybe not always be comfortable, but always necessary, right?
Correct. Yeah. You nailed it. Yeah.
So let's talk, you know, tourism is a big industry. I think Oshkosh Bugasse is actually there, right? That's where.
They are no longer headquartered here, but they used to be, yeah, that was the big, the big thing, the bib overalls. Yeah. And so they used to be right out in our outlet mall. But we do have one of the largest corporations here is from a employment standpoint, and that's Oshkosh Truck. And so they are a great partner for the city as well. They do a lot kind of in partnership. And you know, whether it's donations, sponsorships, they, they're a wonderful company and they do a lot for the city. So we're, we're definitely blessed to have them here.
Great. Yeah. What I was leading to is you mentioned economic growth is another area you want to focus on as well. So we talked about tourism, Oshkosh trucking, like what, you know, and especially retaining students from the university, right? That would be incredible. So what could you do from the city council to, you know, invest in economic growth in Oshkosh?
I think it's about looking at projects that come to us, really taking a look at them, seeing how we can help. We have a couple of areas in Oshkosh that are just very underdeveloped at this point. There used to be some really thriving things, South Main, and they're just not there anymore. And so recently, we have done what's called like a TIF. So we have a TIF district. And that was approved about maybe a week or two ago for some development of some additional housing. And I think that's great because we need places for people to stay and more so affordable housing is important as well. But to your point with, with students and wanting them to stay here, we need to have more entertainment. Like I said, we have tourism and we have those things over the summer. But I think we need to have something that's all year round that people can really do. We've made some great strides. We have the Menominee Nation Arena where there's concerts and that's fairly new to Oshkosh, but it's a pretty big deal. Obviously impacted by COVID. I know personally I had purchased tickets to Junior Chef, Junior Chef. It's like that Master Chef, right? And they were doing that down there at the arena. So that's big for Oshkosh, right? Where, you know, we got people that are famous and celebrities coming and be able to take our kids out and have, you know, a family event. And so just things like that, I think we need to do more of to get people out and about. And especially for our youth, like we don't, you know, we have a lot of adult entertainment, if you will, because they can go out and have a drink. And we have pail laces on the river where you can go and have drinks, which is beautiful. But I think our kids need a little bit more to do. There is one new place that just opened up, which was a great development called Mind Shaft. And it's a restaurant, but it's also a huge playroom. I don't know where you are. If you've ever been to like a Shakey's or any kind of place like that. Yeah. But it's great, right? Because you can take family and it's tokens and you can win prizes. It's kind of like an indoor carnival. So that's been great to see that go up, but there's a couple of areas we still need to continue to develop and, and see how we can utilize the budget to do so.
Great. You mentioned, you know, affordable housing. Let me ask some of the, you know, some of the more common challenges, you know, related to poverty and so forth, right? You know, you know, opioid addiction, housing insecurity, food insecurity. You know, talk to me about, you know, your aspirations, what you would do on the city council to, you know, address some of those like.
Yeah. You know, that's a great question because I think we had some homelessness and it's definitely increased over the last year. We have a couple warming shelters, if you will. We have places where they can get meals. But for me, I think about how do we empower them though, right? Cause you can feed them and you can keep them warm and give them somewhere to lay overnight. But most people, they desire to do that for themselves. And so how do we empower them to do that? And so for me, I think about having some programs to help build skill sets that can help them get jobs, right? You mentioned drug addiction. What does that look like? How do we get them the help that they need from, you know, a substance abuse standpoint? Or I think about things as simple as resume writing workshops, just building skills so that people can go out and get a job that they desire, right? Something that's just going to be able to sustain them. They're not just surviving, but they're able to thrive. They're able to feed themselves and keep themselves warm. I think people would appreciate that. I think they appreciate what we're doing now. But man, I just think about if it were me, I'd be like, okay, I appreciate this, but how do I get on the other end of that where I'm serving a meal? Or I'm bringing someone in to provide shelter for them. So just, I have lots of ideas, right? And so some are grandiose, but anything, any little thing that I can do.
Give me the most pie in the sky one, the one that someone was like, you're crazy. Like, give me, give me a grandiose one. I love.
Grandiose would probably for me, being a working mother, would be free or extremely, extremely, extremely affordable childcare. The other one that I would think would be everybody can go to college, right? For free or for a very, very, very small fee, not like it is now where you graduate and you're in debt, you know, until you're 78. And you know, so those are some of the more grandiose things that I, that I think about.
Awesome. I got news for you. Those aren't grandiose. Those aren't radical. Those are commonplace in other countries.
Yeah. Well, well.
Yeah. Yeah.
Sure. Yeah.
Care like there's, you know, we're, we're, we're just conditioned, we're behind on it, right? So.
So it feels grandiose to you. Yeah. I see what you're saying. Yeah.
Now speak loudly and proudly, fight for that stuff. That's awesome.
Oh, I'm, I'm speaker.
Nice. You know, since we're talking about education, you know, talk about, you know, the school systems in Oshkosh, you know, are they, are they serving the community well? Like, is there anything, I don't know the relationship of city council necessarily. There was anything you can do on city council if.
Yeah. They actually currently have a pretty good partnership with the city council. There is combined Oshkosh Board Meetings with city council. So I was really happy to see that too, because it starts there, right? It really does for, when you want to impact community, you have to start with our children and what they're being exposed to from a standpoint of equity and inclusion, when you think about those things. And I think our school district is, has been struggling. I think they've done a great job, but with anything, just like anybody else right now, who knew we'd have a pandemic? Who had firsthand experience, right? And so I don't fault anyone or blame anyone because it's, it's brand new, right? And so you do the best that you can. Now, knock on my wood table here that we never have to experience that again. But if we did, we now have some basis. We now have some, nope, don't do that. Or yep, we better start doing this. And so I think they're doing a great job. I'm excited to see some of the upcoming changes that they're making. I'm currently a part of, it's called Ally, I believe it's Ally Oshkosh School District. But it's a program and we had our first training. It's kind of just a training on some of the things that they're doing to enhance equity and inclusion within our school district. And so the next one is in May, and then I think there's two or three more after that. But it's open to the community, which is awesome. And then it's also being given, the training's being given at a higher level, definitely with the actual teachers and superintendents and things that, you know, people of that nature. But I think it's wonderful. It's just great that they're investing and that they know that, you know, maybe we need to look at how we've been doing this because it's not impacting everybody the same. And so I'm excited to be a part of it, but it's very, very new.
Yeah, that's great. I wonder, is the topic of, you know, the pandemic certainly revealed a lot of cracks in, in a lot of systems, right? Education being one of them.
Yeah.
You know, is there, is there talk of universal broadband? And would you support that in Oshkosh?
I'm kind of like 50, 50 on it. I, I think it's necessary. We definitely, if not any other year, last year found that out. But I also feel like, you know, if you can afford it, should you pay for it? And should it be for truly people that, that is, that would be a luxury for? And so how do you do that though, right? How do you say, okay, this, this side of the world can have this or this side of the city or whatever? Cause I think it's a great idea, but I feel like if you can afford it, then why not just pay for it? And make sure that we are able to amply supply it for those that just truly cannot provide it for themselves.
Right. So more of a, less of a universal thing and more subsidizing for, you know, people below a certain income or something like that.
Yeah. Yeah. And that's, you know, I haven't done a ton of research on that, but that would be my, my first thought is how do we provide it to those who need it? is how do we provide it to those who who need it necessarily? Uh, and not necessarily, I should say, for those that would be able to pay for it otherwise.
Right on. I got you. Um, when you come back after you're elected,
Hey.
I, I guarantee you're gonna be, you're gonna be like all in on university, be like, oh, of course, Eric, you know?
Yeah, you think so?
Absolutely, I know.
Yeah, I'm only, like I said, I haven't done a ton of um research or deep dive in it, but I do know that I saw that, um, I actually watched our twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-three budget uh webinar this morning and, and that was definitely something that that they were talking about. And so, yeah, we'll see.
Nice. It's one of those things that, that level playing field. It's one of those things that raises, you know, so then there is, there aren't those inequities, right? So it's not about, can you afford it? It's about, you know, those that can't are now here, right? So, you know what I mean?
Yeah, that's, yeah. And then you also, you know, as I'm speaking too, then you start to think, well, now am I being, you know, inequitable to this group? Right? While I'm trying to impact this one and now I'm saying, oh, you can afford it, you get, yeah, absolutely. It's definitely something to, to think about and and do more research on.
That's cool. Yeah, that's kind of popping up in cities around the country, so.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, honestly, Eric, too, that's one of the things um that I feel is a strength uh with me is that I'm never the person to say I know everything. I will say what I think, uh, but I have a really strong willingness to learn. And so if I'm not sure about something, you better believe the next conversation I have, I will have researched it and formulated my opinion. And I think that's a benefit to, to the city and the residents here.
Here, here. Yeah, especially like going back to what you first said about, you know, the openness, being proactive rather than reactive, right? So going out and asking, what are your needs, right?
Yeah.
Um, you know, I, I didn't mention it yet, so the A, the, the election day is April sixth, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, go vote on April sixth, uh, if you're in Oshkosh, if you know anybody in the area in Wisconsin. Share this video, um, share LaTaria's uh Facebook page, um, her Gmail is right there. Feel free to um shoot her a note. Um, do you, you know, not having, I was curious, how did, are you taking donations? Like your grassroots campaign, how do you take?
Yeah, I, I uh did take donations. I have uh stopped taking donations. I have been engaged in receiving more donations, but I, I feel like I've done what I can. Um, I felt like I did need some help with getting my name out, uh, because I'm a new name uh from this standpoint. And so I wanted to make sure that people would be able to hear me, uh, see me, uh, and that kind of thing. And so I took donations, but I was blessed and got everything that I needed from masks to mailers. Uh, you know, so I, I am good. I'm very pleased and happy with what I was able to do. And so I definitely thank everybody that, um, donated to, to my campaign to help me get my name out there. So thank you.
And you know what? That underscores, again, not taking giant checks, that underscores like the quality of a candidate. You're not the first one that has answered that way, like, I got some donations, but I'm good now, right?
Yeah.
Versus like a career person, it's just like, you know, keep, keep them, you know what I mean? So, you know, that, again, that just underscores your authenticity and your, your motives are, are, you know, pure and, you know, I think it's amazing. So, uh, April sixth is the election. Again, share this video, you know, um, go like uh her Facebook page and, you know, any, anything else that we didn't hit on, like policy wise or, you know, things that you want to focus on that we didn't talk about?
No, I, I think uh it's well covered. I definitely have additional videos uh and information on my LaTaria Garrett for City Council Facebook page. I am open to hearing from all of you at uh garretforoshkosh@gmail.com. And so I just look forward to serving all of you. Um, definitely hope that I've earned the vote, right? And it is again, April sixth and Eric, thank you so much for having me.
Thank you for taking some time to chat with me. Good luck on April sixth. I'll be watching your race. And, you know, when you get elected, please come back. There'll be plenty to talk about. I look forward to, to watching all the good you'll do. So thank you for taking some time to chat with me today.
You bet. Have a great one. Happy St. Patrick's Day.
Happy St. Patrick, I'm not even wearing green. I, I'm, I'm.
I know, I didn't either.
So, all right. Thank you so much.
Yeah, you bet. Bye.